Yeah.
So, six thirty, this is our monthly city council meeting, it's August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do you have a call of order?
Mayor Ikorz.
Here.
Council Benegras.
Here.
Council Phillips.
Here.
Council Rysdordur.
Here.
Council Spring.
Here.
And we've got Joe Palin, President, myself, Ian, and Rachel.
On the participants, anybody?
Have anybody here now?
I didn't see anyone. Oh, no, yes.
All right, we have a roll call taken, so we'll talk about our agenda. I have just a couple minor editorial comments. On item X, VII, new business. It's the article flood repair report request letter. And in the letter itself, it talks about a motion to accept bids, so there will be a motion regarding the flood repair bids.
Richmond, XII is.
XB, I, I, sorry.
Oh, XB.
It's sixteen.
Letter B.
I knew this, that's what it happened. I've got a couple.
And there's also a motion reading needed with the Public Works Assistant Job Description Job Posting. There will be a motion there also.
Where's that one?
Under X. Under X.
Page three.
Page two, Public Works. So, just a couple editorial things.
Page three.
Page three and then on the bottom. So, the XI.
Yeah.
XIII under B under flood repair.
The agenda.
They don't have that.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, I've got one, I'd like to kind of review the memo from August eleventh, and I'm gonna put that under planning and zoning. So, it would be under XI.
What was under planning and zoning?
It's gonna be the memo that we got from August eleventh, all of us got it. But that'll come up with the discussion of what's going on with planning and zoning. And then.
Copies there, it wasn't in our pack?
Well, we've all got it, but yes, I do have copies, sure. The same way everybody got it, but it's, yeah.
Right.
That's it, right? Then I also have for the other one, Employee Relations Committee on page eighty-five, on the consent agenda.
Do we need to pull the consent agenda?
That's a discussion.
Well, we, last time, when I went into the consent agenda, it was said that I had to mention it before it got to the consent agenda.
So, I did some reviewing of the consent agenda, and it's okay, we can pull those out, but rather than talk about the amendments on the overall agenda, when we get to the consent agenda, we'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, and then you can pull those items out.
Okay.
And then we will discuss those three items.
That's great, well, yeah.
We'll pass rest of the consent agenda and then talk about those into the.
Okay, well, that makes sense, I mean, I was just going by what you said last time, so.
Yeah, I, you're right, that's what I said.
We just passed the whole, we just passed the whole consent agenda, once the discussion's taking place, if you take a motion, a second, and then discussion, and then the vote.
Well, no, we'll pull the items out.
There's not two votes, the consent agenda, there's one.
Well, there's, we'll pull the votes out, individual items, and then we'll approve the consent agenda except for those three items. Then we'll take each item one by one, discussion, motion if needed, motion if wanted.
So, at that time, we can pull anything out of the consent agenda at that time?
Yeah.
Yes, good.
Okay, okay, well, yeah, which is fine, so, all the rest of them fit under the consent agenda, so.
What part of that employee relations are you pulling out?
We have to do that, we'll wait till we get to that part of it, as an end discussion.
Okay, so, I make a motion, we accept the agenda with the amendments of adding a motion to item X. A motion to XBII, new business flood repair bids, motion. And then under XI, planning and zoning, add a memo of August ninth, discussion, I guess.
What's August eleventh? What's the motion under X, what's that about?
That's the one that you get that for a motion to the flood repair bills, that's what they were.
And there's a motion on the Public Works Job Description.
It's an edifying, motion's in the letter, but it's not on the agenda as such. Just a technicality, but, so there's no confusion when we get to that, and somebody makes a motion, well, it's not in there, but you want to make it part of the agenda. Write that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. You do a second?
No, move second.
I'll do a second.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, next time, it's our public forum, three-minute time limit per person. City Council welcomes and encourages participation from community members, please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules, known employees' names may be used, please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during public forum, please step up to the podium, state your name, address, and fill out the white form that's provided. Speakers will be recognized only once, you will be timed, beginning speaking when the ring card is raised by Rachel, our city clerk. A yellow indicates you have thirty seconds left, and a red card indicates you have reached your three-minute time limit and must stop. So with that, we'll open the public forum at six thirty-six PM.
Usually, you're there, you can ask, questions be asked or strictly comments?
I'm sorry?
Can questions be asked during the public forum, can a city member ask questions or simply make comments?
Maybe from the public forum.
It could be, questions can be asked?
You can ask questions.
Questions, yeah.
He won't answer them?
They won't answer them, no, so it's meant to be mostly just comments, but you can ask questions, they just, you won't give me the answers, so.
But we, but we would, don't you like to know what the questions are, okay, so.
Anybody speaking?
No, I think it's great when people speak, I think it's wonderful.
My name is Adam, I live at seven forty River Park Place, southeast, and I just learned yesterday about the sale of the land inside of River Park, and so I had questions about land, is there already a person identified that's gonna purchase it? Is it gonna be, I would assume, cut up into lots that are three-quarter acres, similar to ones that are there now, and sold? And, so I don't really know what the plan is, so it's kind of working backwards from what's, what's on here. So I guess the only input I would add is that my hope would be that it's lots that are similar to what is there now, and it seems sensible use to do so, right, the land isn't, isn't gonna be as a drain field anymore, doesn't make sense for the city to hold the land, so I'm an advocate of developing the land into residential lots, but I just hope that it is residential lots and not, you know, a townhouse development or something that's not fitting into the current covenants and restrictions, and then furthermore, I would like, I think it would be beneficial to the city to sell the lots individually through the MLS database in an area where my day job is real estate, and I think that it's anybody selling land or house should, if they're working towards maximizing the highest proceeds, put the house or the land, in this case, on the market for any buyers to buy, I think you'll get the most proceeds by listing it for sale as opposed to selling it to a developer. My concern about selling it directly to a developer and letting them chop up the land themselves is, is we don't get to, you know, I think it'd be more sensible for us to pay for a survey, subdivide it, and then sell the lands individually, as opposed to, or the lots individually, as opposed to selling it just to a developer and letting them run with it. In our same subdivision, when there was, I think, four or five lots left, they were sold from the developer to developers' sibling, I believe, to develop the final lots, and I understand there were some headaches with some of the lots that were built on by that developer, it was more of a spec home situation, quick put-up, lesser quality materials, et cetera, and so I think if custom-built homes were planted in this space, it would be more insistent with the neighborhood, so that's all the comments that I have to share.
Second call for public forum. Better let's speak. Everybody online?
Our line, our line thing is gone.
Participants. Anybody on Zoom would like to speak at public forum? Third and final call for public forum. We'll close the public forum at six forty. Right. Next item is our Sheriff's Monthly Report. Sergeant Ren, do you have anything to share?
Nothing too worth shattering. Just talked to one of the deputies who spoke to a couple of people about traffic complaints, speeding, they got the speed limit sign and/or radar signs, so I will infer whoever he spoke, who was speaking about our speed trailer, to have that brought up here, or if you guys were gonna invest in another sign like you have down in Minnesota. Does anybody know, Chance?
We haven't talked about a type of speed trailer, I know something Public Works has talked about, but we haven't really brought it to council or anything like that, or budgeted for.
And then the only other thing was, we had a peddler going through the city last week, I want to say, receive a complaint that I took, when I spoke to the complainant, and actually made contact with a gentleman, advised him he had to get a permit through the city if he was gonna do that, he actually was told by a city worker that he's supposed to have a permit, and then I got a call later about him, so I don't know if you guys have heard about any other complaints about Vivint being up here and trying to sell their services or not, but I spoke directly to him and to the complainant, hopefully it was resolved after that, but I hadn't heard anything since, so I don't know if you guys have heard anything or not, so.
Anybody speak to the comment?
I, I've had peddlers come to my house, I always ask them for their permits, and they usually scram pretty quickly, so.
All right, that's both all live and fast on, so.
How should we handle those in the future, actually, they're usually not a safety concern, but.
Usually not, usually they're trying to sell without a permit, you know, which doesn't cost a lot, but it's requiring by the city up here, so I just ask them, can I see your permit? You know, just to verify legitimacy, and then they're, they are who they say they are, or stuff like that, I wouldn't necessarily be rude or anything, call our office, we can come up here, contact you, and hopefully get in contact with them, so that they're aware of the requirements, you know, and it's in your guys' ordinances that they need to have a permit, so as long as those ordinances meet state statute requirements, we can cite them for it, ultimately, if we had to, I don't know if it would necessarily unless they continue to be a problem, so.
Basically, it's just know who they are.
Yeah.
And what I've normally done is, I ask them, have you come down to City Hall and got a permit?
I just had a lot of.
And so that's what I usually do, is I ask the contractor what's going, so it's good to know what they can do.
Best thing, just call our office, and we can deal with it, you know, and usually they're not a problem, they're not criminals, you know, per se, it's usually somebody trying to sell legitimate services, but they just need to have the permit according to the city requirements, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Water and Sewers are next item, and the packet was a closeout letter, final draft, a request, people's service reports, so Joe, would you want to speak to your closeout letter and final payment?
Yeah, so, we've been working with stop construction since the fall of twenty twenty-one to construct the wastewater treatment facility, that's contract one, and we've come to a point where they've achieved substantial and final completion, we've actually, we continue to be in the warranty period, actually, the two-year warranty period starts at substantial completion, and the letter kind of documents the fact that we really have two different sets of substantial completion dates, dates, one when we actually started operation of the wastewater treatment facility, and then the second after the switchgear that was essentially on backorder was furnished and installed, so I document that, those two dates within the letter, and then the two-year warranty extends beyond that. Kind of talk about the fact that, you know, the contract was completed basically at the big unit construction price plus the five change orders that was, were executed, the five change orders equate to about one percent of the total contract amount, we had budgeted about two and a half percent contingencies for the construction contacts, so, you know, we're less than half of, or we, we required less than half of the contingency amount to construct the project. So, this final pay request is for twenty thousand dollars, basically that's paying out the retainage, we continue within the warranty period, and the letter kind of establishes all of that informality, and then, of course, there's a pay request attached to this that I reviewed, the contractor has reviewed and signed, ultimately gets submitted to MPCA and PFA for the final documentation, so, assuming the council approves that, Jason will need a signed copy of this for my file, as well as more importantly, the contractor's file, and then it goes to their bonding company and all that other type of stuff, so. Any questions on the letter, the final pay request, the construction project as a whole, this is just again for stops, it doesn't reflect contract two and three for Fitzgerald that, that hopefully late this fall, after we get through the restoration.
I make a motion, we approve the pay request number thirty-five and file payment of twenty thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
That's all of these continuation sheets, too.
Yeah, their documentation, that their subs were paid, IC one thirty-four forms, we want to make sure that the contractor's getting paid, he's paying their subs, they have to send us the documentation indicating that they're paying their subs, and that's what that is, it really didn't probably need to be in the packet, but I have that, Jason has that information, and now you have to.
Kind of keeps the subs from being able to lean on the city.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Sign, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O's, same sign. That's approved. Your packet is the People's Service Monthly Report. Still, good results or nitrogen phosphorus?
As of now, it's looking good.
Flow's pretty stable, you know, we're inching up just a little bit as more connections happen. Mayor mentioned, one thing I think is really impressive is the phosphorus numbers, I mean, you're down at like a point one, and the limit's point four, Rochester's limit, for example, in many other communities is one point oh, and you're at ten percent of the phosphorus discharge that most cities are, which is pretty impressive, I think that's outstanding.
All right, I think that's all we have, the water sewer, as a side note, John Stowe, image person, resigned, so he was with us for a little over a year, which his work schedule doesn't allow, so we have one opening in our water and sewer committee.
He wasn't there too long, was he?
What's that?
He said he wasn't there too long.
No, a little over a year. Easy guy. Hey, next item is the Public Works. Your packet is a job description, position description, where I have the Works Assistant. Very typical of the other ones we've had, and there's a memo in there from the city administrator with the vacancy itself, the pay range of twenty-five fifty to twenty-nine fifty, and a sequence of events of posting it. URC reviewing applicants. Making a recommendation to council. Around October third, and bring it to the October fourteenth council for approval. Anything else that came?
Jason did really well on the, on all of it, so.
So I make a motion, we approve the jobs, Public Works Assistant Job Description, and the position opening and the recommended starting salary.
Second it.
Great, thank you.
I was getting the impression of previous employee that filled it, that wanted to retract his resignation. That would save us having to re boast this.
He's waiting for your comment.
The previous employee that resigned asked to pull back his resignation, the next day, my understanding is, and refused to take it, is what he was saying, don't see why we didn't desire him back.
I would say he's more than willing to apply for it and go through the interview process.
I mean, that's a possibility, I mean, there's no way, he resigned, he wasn't terminated, so. He'd be in the same pool with the other candidates, so we'll see. All right, any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? O's?
I, I'm opposed.
We had three days.
Two, no.
Two days, okay. Is it approved? Next item was the planning and zoning.
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to talk a little bit about planning and zoning as well last night, we turned around and had WSB give a little bit of what they've come up with so far on the final draft of what the new code is, so we had a full house.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. So the only thing I see in planning and zoning was this August eleventh memo.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we're going over, because we didn't have time to do minutes, if there were from last night, I thought it would be good to explain what's, what happened, because normally, well, normally you ask about planning and zoning, and we turn around to it, that's okay, I have no problem with doing that, so.
Ultimately, WSB project is postponed another month.
Yeah, but I mean, we had some really good comments, which I think are important for what there is for council to know what the comments are.
And it's available on the video to watch, yes.
It's fine with me, no problem. So, in the process of, and we'll go back to the August eleventh letter that there is, one of the things that's, that's of concern is the I-Works, because we use that I-Works at planning and zoning all the time. I-Works has already been approved by council for council to have that access, so it can't be pulled back since the council has already approved that. And that was done during the Tom Wiener meetings that we had, when we got CMS approved, just to bring your memory back. And the reason why we need to have that cross-check that there is in there is our prior administrator turned around and approved a single wide mobile home to be put inside, which does not meet our, our code at all that was done. So that's, that was one of them, the DJ market, we weren't aware of with that, and so that's also one, Glenn's Motor Coach was the same. So with all the things that had happened, the I-Works became available to us for all the council to be able to do that, and again, approved by council. So I need to have that put back on and me to be active, and anybody else that wants to be active.
What do you do with it?
So, I-Works is, is really important, okay, so.
What do you use it for?
I use it for planning and zoning on everything, every meeting we have of planning and zoning, we go over and take a look at I-Works, that's, that's how we, we work and keep track of what's going on. And it's a cross-check as a safety check, that there is that people, you know, like administrators, that there are, just don't arbitrarily give permits for something that aren't to be permitted, so that's what it is, and that's why that's in there, and again, council's already approved it, it's already done.
Yeah, so I'm not as familiar with it, so you're looking at it in the committee, you're logging in and making sure.
It's online, and you're, and it's for you, too, anybody that's on council has access to the I-Works, that's what was given, that's what we, we work with, and that's why CMS is doing it, was that was a part of it for us to get I-Works.
So you can view, so you can view projects.
Are you looking at it in P and Z, like the actual meeting, or you're doing it when?
Watching as things go along, but it's all a part of what's happening with P and Z.
We do discuss permits that have been pulled in P and Z, and the information that we're given is very, very minimal, the information that's in I-Works is significantly more substantial. I personally haven't logged into it and haven't used it. But you, you have a lot of the information when we have those meetings, and they're, it's good information to have.
I don't know, again, council's already approved it, there's no discussing it, it needs to be, it's iconic, yeah.
So, I think what's happened is that either it's lack of understanding of what the I-Work says, and talking to developers called out of chain of command, but the point is, I think it's been abused, not fully understand what the symbols mean, and I think it's caused some it's put the city in a bad light because of the miscommunication of how what person has or has not done, a developer or builder. You know, P and Z itself has a great function, and that function is when lot splits or any public hearing of variances, CUP applications that come to P and Z, that's their main function. Monitoring building permits is not, per code, is not really a function of the planning and zoning committee.
Again, this was passed by city council, and, and it's not up for discussion, or do you want to bring it up again at a different point, you can, but since it's already been approved by council, it's got to be put on there, period, end of story, we discussed it at that time back at the beginning of last year.
And I think it's fine, but I think it was abused and didn't serve its purpose, and what happened?
I'm not so certain your accusation of saying it's abused. To be an example of how it was abused. Let me finish you. I, I can't see where you're saying it was abused, because you show no examples, you know, we have, when it comes to the public asking a council member something, you know, they put our phone numbers and email addresses online for them to contact us, if they have a question. Sure, you're gonna answer a question, and you're, you're gonna answer it to best your ability and refer, refer to City Hall when you have been.
That's exactly what a person should do.
Exactly, exactly.
Exactly, and that wasn't done.
So, but, but removing this without council action, removing it is wrong, because council approved it, to put it on.
And I, and I'd like to know, too, because Joe and I went to one of them, which was a developer that there was, which was, was Greens, and I, I called Joe. There were two building permits that were already pulled for that facility that there was, he had a question on whether it could be a possible variance on, on the back part for where the refrigeration units were going and the back patio, and then we went to discussion of what there was for drainage for what the parking lot was, and those permits were already pulled, I turned around and I brought Joe in, you know, and, and I let you do the talking, all I did was listen, didn't do anything else that there was behind it. So for you saying it's abused, I, I don't see that being abusive at all, but trying to help, you know, Jeff Green move his project along, and if there was a variance that was gonna be required, then we're ready to be able to do the variance, otherwise it was done, and it was done directly with Joe being there. So, you know, I take.
You just explained the reason why it was abused, because it's not a council. You just explained the reason why it was abused, because it's not a council member's position to.
Not a councilman, not a councilman, it was planning and zoning, and anytime you go to planning and zoning and you're looking at a variance. It goes through planning and zoning, and that's the correct way to do it, so that's what the question was, and that's the way we addressed it. And actually, Irv was there as well, that heard everything that was going on.
By, by Jeff.
So, so the comment that. Everything you've described, you know, having a building permit online said you have one, doesn't mean it's complete. There's no, there's no site plan, there's no storm management plan. Had that been done by the resident. That would have been brought to the city councils, or not to our councils, to a city administrator, city clerk's attention and say, hey. We need this, this and this, and we'll get back to it, but that never came to us. So you were kind of circumventing the system.
No, not at all, because I know that those things are required when he was asking what he really needed. Before he was spending the money to do it, am I right on that, Joe, that he was asking what, what needed to be done? That's part of what there was, if there was going to be a variance that was in there, I never once. As a council member, offered any advice or, or made any comments whatsoever when there was.
You're, you're absolutely right, you should have told Jeff. Please contact city staff to find out what you need to do, and we'll go through the process. With everything submitted, working with CMS and Joe.
Right, and if I may.
Exactly what Paul said, you can take those discussions, but you always refer to city staff. And it doesn't appear that you do.
But I don't believe city staff has the right to remove that without council permission. That's my point.
Can't be done.
Council, well.
Can't be done, Ryland.
Count, just saying. Council, council made the decision to give that, that, uh, access to county.
That's true.
And it, the council needs to remove it, the administrator can't remove that.
May I ask when that decision was made?
Yeah, first part of February last year.
Yeah, I agree, because my recollection is it was requested. And you'd spoken to our staff after I had gotten hired, and we talked to CMS to see if it was possible. And as a courtesy, we allowed access to P and Z and council, there was never official vote on it, so. I'll have to go back and review February, because that was before my time.
So let's go back and look at the actual determination. Request.
And I think if it's council members and committee members, sometimes we get put in hard places. Uh, when we're being asked questions about a committee. And it's which hat are you wearing while you're answering that question, I think all of us who are on committees. Have run into that issue, I do think that I-works. Um, has some good tools for checks to make sure that. That things aren't sneaking through the cracks, like Jim said with the single wide trailer that got put. Um, in town here. I do think that. Everything has, we have to respect the process as well. Um, and so we can't be using that authority to. Circumvent the process, but I, I think that I-works is a, could be a very powerful tool for P and Z. Just to be able to, to, to check on the stuff.
Well, in, in addition to that.
It's, it's a tool.
We didn't know DG market was going in until about sixty days before they.
Our, our Glen's Motor Coach either the same way, and, and they had changed zoning codes on. On Glenn's Motor Coach, because, you know, a bus terminal is not permitted inside the city. And you change that code to be highway commercial during that time, which allowed that to be done. And, and that was done, taken care of, and I like Glenn's, I think Glenn's has done a great job. But that's the only way that, that they were able to go in there is being highway commercial.
Who changed the code for that?
Well, that, otherwise you could not have put it in that location, because a bus terminal. Is not allowed in city code. And so when you looked at it where it was done, it was done as highway commercial. Okay, and that made it.
It's, it came across to us as being a retail, because they offer tour charges or tour. And, but they don't do maintenance.
The bus terminal.
Bus, no.
It's a bus terminal. But just, these are just.
A bus terminal is not going from route to route to route.
And then they go around the route to route, but I'm just saying, those are the things, if there was a question about it, it should have come to P and Z. Decision would have been made and everything would have, and would it come back to council and it would have been done. But those are the things that I'm saying that are important, because things get through. Okay, and people turn around and just do that, so it's, that's the reason why it was put in there, and I think it's very valuable. For everybody to have access to, that's, that's the purpose behind it.
Well, I'd like to see the record, uh, when this decision was made before we continue the discussion.
Well, I, I think with. Two of us being here, that were on council during that time.
Council voted on it.
It's been voted on, it should be put on now, if you want to devote it and come back in again later, but right now it should be put on.
No, it's, we'll wait and find out.
Uh, no, it's already been approved by council, Ryland.
I'd like to see the record.
You were there, you should remember that conversation we had with all that stuff.
The discussion, sure. I don't know if it was request or emotion, that's what I don't remember.
It was done during Shirley, so you tell me what was going on when Shirley was here. As acting, I mean, Shirley was the one that was in charge of that at that time. He didn't do anything that wasn't right with Shirley, you know that. Our, our temporary administrator.
He said, okay, let's move on. What's your, is that it?
Yeah. Very big.
So next item is.
I'm not sure you make a motion.
Employees Relations Committee.
I want to make a motion to have that put back on again.
I second it.
We're talking about employee relations?
No, we're talking about I-works, I'm making a motion to have it put back on.
Until we get a mo, we're gonna find out for sure, and then we'll come back in the September meeting. We'll follow up on the request.
Is it going to be turned on until then?
Uh, it won't be turned on until we have the discussion in September.
But the council's already approved it, how come you're turning it off? Council's.
We're moving on. Employee relations. Group communication.
We have actually one on parks and trails just for awareness.
Oh, sure, yes.
I can skip to it, so, um, with parks and trails, we're gonna put forward a Southern Minnesota, um, grant, it's about, uh, ten thousand with a match of twenty-five hundred. It's due by August, um, twenty-eighth, and we're looking at. Purchasing some outdoor fitness equipment for the Ornoco Park, that would have, I get about three to four different, um, outdoor fitness equipment. With that, that twenty-five hundred match, um, we do have it in the budget for twenty-twenty-six. If, if we do get that, there's also potential to use some of the funds for. Um, salary that weren't used out of Jason's budget to match that, if we do get it, um, notification by the end of the year. Otherwise, we're putting it forward into our twenty-twenty-six budget as a request. So just an awareness that we'll submit that grant.
If that can decision on. End of the year or in twenty-two.
It said do, um, decisions maybe by October, so we would, you know, I would assume that for twenty-twenty-six.
And, um. We received, EDA received a grant, usually comes out in February. Twenty-twenty-six is what it's.
Yeah, it didn't say when they released funds, if it would be as soon as we were awarded, or it didn't really say.
We shouldn't make up. Move all of that, make sure it gets put in the budget for, probably doing the budget for up stuff too.
Sure, I can do that.
Do you want to go ahead and take the?
Yeah. One thing to talk a little bit about, it's more probably a conversation, but I do think, you know, coming into city council, I think there's been a opportunity. Um, to think about how do we improve communication between not just our city council, but also city administrator and even our committee leaders. I think a lot of times there's, there's silo conversations, and I just want to make sure that. Nothing surprises us, um, as a collective group, so that we can make the best decision for the city of Ornoco, so. Looking to think about ways to establish maybe a, a more proactive way to. Um, share some of these things, I know Jason's done in the past, kind of weekly. Memos with things that are going on, I'd like to see that, um, be, become maybe a habit, um, of, of more, um, proactive communication, even if there's not all the details. Um, but even continuing to share that with. The committee leaders as well, I think one of these things, as we talked with our first responders and fire department, when we had our, um, workshop with them. They want to know what's going on in the city, maybe that doesn't relate to them, but they may want to ask some questions or know what it means, some implications, so I think we need to. Try and broaden our circle a little bit when we're sharing some of these things, obviously, we want to make sure that confidential things are shared appropriately, but I do think there's probably an opportunity for us to think about. How do we have some more structure, um, to create some trust, not just, um, within ourselves, but also with our residents, so would like to think about. A way to, to do that. Um, and make sure that we're kind of holding each other accountable for that as well.
So you're, would you like to make a motion then to pursue that?
Yeah, um, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the use of, um, maybe a reoccurring update, um, from the city administrator out to city council, as well as the committee leaders. Um, even if all the information's not fully baked, but making sure that we're doing that, um. And making sure that as we have conversations, that we're trying to not triangulate and have siloed conversations.
Second half.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, I think that's, maybe they can, whatever this, uh. Framework looks like, you know, I think that's a possibility of. Of working not only with parks and trails, but also P and C, water and sewer, the, our, our first responders is. In our overall. Improvement of communications, because you can never over communicate, in my opinion, so. I think there's a process that could help that, and. I think it's also, it's also good from the standpoint of. But once, like in the case of a building permit or zoning or variance or whatever, I think it's, it's good to know the process of how that's going through the system. I think that's, uh, we could all benefit from that, so.
So how will this ensure that the communication, it's two ways? Because I think that's part of our, our issue as well, is Jason can send out. Memos, but he might not be getting information back, so how can we? How can we make sure that the communication is happening in both directions, because I think that's just as important.
Yeah, no, I agree, I, again, I think that's on us individually, as well as the city council and. The committee leaders, right, if there's things where we need to connect dots, then we should be helping with those conversations. And when something maybe. Isn't exactly how we thought would be going, or we have some questions, I think that's where we need to make sure that we're having those dialogues, but I agree, I do think it's not a one-way. Communication, um, Jason shouldn't be sending these out, and they just get put in an inbox somewhere, like we should be reading them, we should be sharing them when it makes sense. Um, and making sure that we're following the process and we're, we're having some of those conversations when maybe things aren't. How we all want it to play out. But I think that's a great point, Daniel, that it, it needs to be both ways.
So will this be a kind of living and evolving? Process here where we're going to start with Jason's administrator update and, and then. Kind of work from there to get everything else pieced together.
Yeah, and I think it's more a framework, it's not just on Jason, um, I think it's also on us, right, so I think that there's probably opportunities to continue to expand it, I know Jason and, and the city staff do a lot. To make sure that we're managing the city appropriately, so that's probably the first easy way to start, but I do think there is even opportunities as us sitting on committees that we're sharing up, and we're not just sharing minutes. Things get lost in minutes, things maybe don't always translate in minutes, so we need to make sure that we're bringing those things forward too.
One key. Uh, another crucial piece of this is, is how that communication is distributed. I know that sometimes I'm, I struggle to find correct. Contacts for people because they're either not using city email or not, and then they're using personal email. Um, and so that's something that I would like maybe to even add to this.
Now, contact information.
Making either DLs in Outlook, if that's something that we can do. Um, if, I would prefer city email addresses used, but if. For whatever reason, that's not possible, those personal emails get added to those DLs as well. Probably have to touch base on open meeting stuff with DLs, but I don't know how that all works. But I think that getting all that information.
I think even if you had a one place where all that contact information lived, it would be a lot easier.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a great point.
The big thing with open meeting is making sure it's not then creating a communication like a.
So if we BCC a DL, I'm not even sure if that's, can you BCC a DL?
Yeah, it's, it's the, the open community, the open meeting law stuff refers more to once we start having. Conversation and start making decisions and talking about things, so the, the passing of information is not a problem, but. And this is, there's some things in there too, like there was referenced in, uh, your. Request there for like a shared centralized platform, I think that's a, a concern, because it just allows for open communication back and forth, it's not public.
Yeah, I was thinking more like a, like a folder somewhere where you're putting all your updates, so if people don't want it in their inbox, they can go and pull your last one, but maybe a push is better, I don't know.
And, and we can potentially expand this Otter AI into something like that, because. Our, all of our meeting minutes should be compiled into that, and you can ask Otter to summarize. What's been talked about. You know, WSB project, we always talked about that, and if anything was said in water and sewer about it, it would populate through. That, so you can look into that a little bit.
The one issue with that would be like fire and first responder and fire relief, I think they'd be over there, so they wouldn't have it. And I don't know if they all have access to go in there and ask it questions too.
That's something that we can work on though, is getting access to.
That could be part of it. I just think there's a need, I mean, again. Anytime there's, there's silo conversation, right, it makes really hard to be informed and make a collaborative decision for the, for the city, so I think. This is probably gonna be something that we'll just need to continue to talk about and what works and what doesn't work and what. People are finding value in, or it's just extra work and let's continue to iterate. I don't think this is gonna be a, we did it, we checked the box, and now everyone's informed.
So would you see this being a, bringing a proposal back to council and it is kind of. Go into more detail of the details of what Daniel mentioned or anybody else that they have to say, the format? Okay. In the process, so. All right, any other comments? Any, well, in favor, sign it, are you saying aye?
Uh, well, she had.
We're just gonna start, start without any more.
Aye.
Those all five ayes, right, okay, that's approved. Uh, Jim, you have some discussions, so, um. I guess if I may, not to prolong the. The length of the meeting, but if we could keep the discussion fairly brief, but at the same time. To your questions as well.
Yeah, uh, I was, uh, wondering if we could get a copy of the contract that was sent out to the first, to, uh. Uh, Ornoco Township that there was with the first responders, we were talked about it, we've never seen it, so I was wondering if we could get that.
Yeah, and this was an initial contract that was presented to them to start working on with them, and if they had questions, so I did print off copies, I'll give them, pass them around here, so you guys can have that. Again, this was worked up with fire. And perfect monitor, but Dan and you on, to get the, uh, numbers and things kind of put in there, and then with our lawyer. Jesus, this was back a couple months after I started in twenty-twenty-four. Um, and then since then, it just kind of set until the beginning of the year, when I met with the township and said, look this over, let's try to work. Let's try to work things in here you like, you don't like, so we can have something that would be presentable um, to both parties, you know, gave them time to look over, so that's where that's at.
And thank you very much for that.
Is any of this confidential?
No. The basic contract that was presented to them, they'll kind of review and go over. And in the front here, I think on the first page, under like section one, fire medical services, this was put in here. This was for them to, them and our group to kind of like say, these are what we would like to have. So Orno Co Township would go through and go, okay, we want these services type of thing. So that way we could really narrow the contract down further after we knew what exactly they were looking for.
This doesn't actually have a dollar amount because they haven't.
Yeah, I don't know, page two with that. Yep, page two, number two.
And again, this amount was uh, given to me by our fire chief and training officer. I had met with him, geez, probably back in April of last year, April, May, um, and had them gather numbers for me and and put in the numbers, cause obviously that's their world, they know their numbers, their costs, what they're doing. And especially being here only a month or two, um, so that's what was put in there. With based off the numbers they presented with a increase um, year to year. And that was, again, subject to change, it was just an estimated one that was put in there versus like a flat rate. So just cause depending on how the costs fluctuate each year for medical supplies and services and whatnot.
So the numbers here represent the estimated or the actual cost of supplies to provide the services that.
Yeah, so the first one you'll see is the fourteen three, that was their original contract in twenty twenty four. Um, and then in twenty twenty five, it was gonna be twenty eight thousand. Uh, that was, I think, around the cost there um, that we had spent on the township to provide services. Yeah, well, and I think it was in twenty three.
Okay.
So, but we were already in twenty four, so we weren't gonna change anything in twenty four.
And this is meant to have that conversation, right?
Yeah, that was the the conversation starter to see where they're at and just present it to them and go, okay, look at it, review it. Get back to me what you like, don't like. And their big thing was, they wanted to, as they explained later on, see the breakdown of costs, and that's where it kind of fell apart.
Do you know when this was presented to me?
January, February timeframe.
Did you hear anything back from them?
Yeah, they had wanted information for the breakdown of costs. And that's when I gathered what I could and then attempted to get information from the fire first responder group and didn't get anything further.
Okay.
At least not to, things I got was already stuff that was presented and it wasn't what they were asking for, so.
Anything else on that?
Yeah, another one was, uh, I had just, we had talked about, actually a couple of months ago, was uh, the follow-up on the selling of the drain field in River Park. And that was just, you know, it's a follow-up.
Yeah, we didn't talk about it. I I know we talked about waiting till we get the new con or the new ZOG codes too.
Okay.
Before we.
Which is fine, I mean, that's that's us.
I remember what we did talk about.
Um, so, so a handful of your questions, nothing's been de- decided. This is completely in its infancy of discussion. This has pretty much been on the agenda every other month since December or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and this is about how the conversation has gone.
We're just keeping it active, that it's just.
It's on there as a placeholder, so it doesn't get put to aside. So truly, nothing has been discussed, there's been no developers that have come forward to stake a claim to it. There's been no official ask of work for our engineer to do this, so. You're not the only River Park person that has saw this and was like, what's going on, so.
There's been nothing budgeted.
Yeah, so there's nothing.
To that also. Need to be budgeted for utilities, need in there, you know, in the survey and the kind of, and and the splitting has lots, planning.
To kind of echo off that is, you know, if we were to split it and then Joe can kind of explain maybe too from off, but my understanding is we'd have to have all that infrastructure cost in place, which is why I think it was always talked about just selling it to a developer as a whole. And then they would be responsible for that, cause we're not set up for those infrastructure costs. If we start selling them off individually, to put in roads and the sewer and all that extra additional stuff, so. And it depends on how the development's laid out, I don't know. So, but I think that comes with the size of the lots and all that other stuff too, so there's a lot.
What I would like to have is a comments from Joe, because there's a lot of comments and statements being made about developer of River Park saying nothing will ever be done, built on it, they can't build on it. And I'd like to have Joe just spend a few minutes and just talk about the help. Make a plane or or a clean playing field here, exactly what we can or can't do with it. I'd like to have Joe to speak to what's there, what we can do and where we can't.
Just a little bit of information, uh, what was there was essentially a waste waste treatment facility. Uh, there was some tanks that collected solids, uh, one uh, near the lift station one A near Ryland's house. In fact, there is a solids tank that collected solids there and some of the wastewater was pumped over to the other site, which also had tanks to collect solids and treat waters or treat water through through a process. Ultimately, uh, the water was discharged to a drain field. The drain fields, you know, just a series of drain tile that are extended through a grid pattern through much of that area. Um, and the water is dispersed, so solids and contaminants were addressed through biological process. Solids were collected within the tanks uh, and disposed of. When the project came along, uh, we pumped all the tanks, uh, removed all the wastewater and the solids. Uh, then the tanks were collapsed and filled and buried. Um, the infrastructure within those tanks, like pumps and electrical components, uh, any buildings on site, chemicals, all those things were removed and disposed on a landfill. Um, the drain fields themselves um, were left in place with the exception of the access ports to the drain fields, uh, cleanouts, those types of things were removed. Uh, and so that's all in cor- in accordance with MPCA guidelines on abandonment of those facilities. So can the area be developed? Well, it can, a good example of houses being built where that has happened. Um, in Cedar Woodlands three, that condo development, one of those condos is gonna be placed right on what used to be a mound system. Uh, River Bend is another example, that drain field system was on that outlot. The system was removed by the developer, the lot was split into residential houses, probably will be constructed in there pretty shortly.
They're starting already.
Uh, so it can be done. Now, there are some things that have to be dealt with within that process. Obviously, there are drain tile systems in a grid pattern through a good chunk of it, not all of it. Uh, and where those systems are encountered, um, they would have to be removed. Where any structures were built, I would recommend that um, a geotechnical engineer come in, just like they do with every house, as they dig the foundations and prep the sites, take a look at the foundation that the house goes on and approve it. And if there needs to be modifications to that, that that would have to be done. Would I expect there to be any? I really don't. Um, good sand material, I wouldn't be overly concerned about the water that was filtrating through that system, that's a pretty normal process uh, that happens. Um, we did construct a lift station on the corner of that facility. Uh, and that lift station was funded by a clean water revolving loan fund. And so when you go through that process, you have to do what's called a real property declaration, uh, which essentially places a deed restriction on that uh, property. Uh, the deed restriction is important because the state and federal government are giving you money. They don't want you to spend their money on something like the lift station site and then turn around and sell it. You can't do that. Um, so with that in mind and knowing that it was just a large outlot, we tailored that uh, real property declaration and that deed restriction to be just a square at that lift station. I can't remember the dimensions, maybe like a hundred and fifty foot square. The rest of it is free of the deed restriction and you can develop it. Um, in terms of developing that property, you know, there are roads around the whole perimeter. There's sanitary sewer and water made around most of the perimeter. Um, the sewer and water services would have to be extended into the lots. You know, so there'd have to be some excavation of streets, but I think a fairly modest amount. Um, you know, that's a pretty large area, you really should look at how that might be configured. You might even want a feasibility report to kind of lay out some different options and um, ideas on how that would be served. Um, even if you don't intend to sell it yourself, that information would be nice to hand over to the developer and say, here are some of the possibilities that we see as viable and what we think the costs are, because we know the city's infrastructure better than the developer is gonna, and there's concrete costs with that. And so then they can kind of do the math and um, understand that. The other piece of the puzzle that's changed is stormwater. Since the development was built, um, stormwater regulations and requirements have ratcheted up quite a bit. And uh, the stormwater infrastructure that is probably in place now, probably didn't contemplate houses in that area. Probably contemplated that it would be green space, because that's what it has been for the last twenty-five years. Um, so that said, you know, the old drainage reports reports would have to be reviewed and the new um, stormwater ordinances and requirements governed by the city's code and the MPDS, MPCA uh, stormwater permits would have to be reviewed. It's possible that, um, you know, there's some additional stormwater enhancements that would be, have to be incorporated within that area to address the additional impervious area that essentially would be constructed there through the construction of houses and driveways and things like that. So, you know, you can probably expect some sort of stormwater feature would have to go in there or perhaps smaller features, maybe rainwater gardens, maybe a small pond, maybe some underground storage, maybe a combination of a number of things. But there is going to be a cost associated with that, that you have to kind of contemplate. So laying out those things at some point might be important. Um, it's certainly developable property. You know, the only restriction really is we stay away from that, you know, that square where the lift station is. The rest of it's pretty open and clean and easy to service. So it's a pretty valuable property in my estimation.
So the square he's referring to is in the southwest corner of the drain field, where the two buildings used to be, that's where the tanks were at.
Right where lift station one is, is what.
Lift station's still there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The main lift station.
Um, well, we built the big lift station, not as lift station, we did not keep any of their existing lift stations, they are all gone.
And so the area you're talking about is the new lift station, the square that the new lift station sits on.
Yeah, it's kind of in the corner on the westmost part of that property.
So generally speaking, do when these drain fields get decommissioned, do they stay within that current development or does it become a whole brand-new development? So would it be, can still be considered River Park or would it be a River Park two, like?
Well, it would have to be replanted, right? So right now it's an outlot, um, can't develop an outlot. Uh, so you can replant it and then essentially parcel it out. So, you know, you could, and and what you would name that subdivision, I think is, you could name it anything, once it's replanted.
Referring to also, is that because we all signed a River Park covenant when we bought our lots? That was in two thousand and five, it was a ten-year, ten-year covenant to twenty fifteen.
I'd have to look at the exact dates again.
We have, so that property.
So would that be, that property be subject to the covenants is what you're trying to.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
That's an interesting question, because.
From what I remember, it was due twenty twenty fifteen, but the point, and we tried to, we had a meeting in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen from um, homeowners that lived there at the time of developing an HOA. And that was voted down to have an HOA. So I don't know if that was Jack's plan, is an HOA, we take over that covenant.
So usually covenants are recorded against the property, so they apply to all the properties, right? And then the covenants are enforced by an HOA. Um, that would be normal, so I would be interested to see if covenants were recorded against that outlot. Theoretically, outlots aren't developed, so there wouldn't be a reason to record it against that. Um, but it could have been, could have been contemplated.
I was, I was sitting on planning and zoning, it was something that was going on and and uh, Jack put that stuff in there just to keep things uniform throughout the development, it was the big reason for any of it.
Yeah, so so doing an owners and encumbers report on that outlot would would say if that was recorded against that outlot and, you know, also looking at the covenants, the covenants might say that the, you know, if you read the text, it would maybe tell you what they were intended to apply to.
So that's all part of our, we need to go back to look at the books on that we have here and see what we have documented from him when the development was created.
Yeah, and and just going to the county and seeing what was recorded against the property.
Right, yeah, but it might have been.
Might, might have been, who knows?
Is there other conversations about the other drain fields that have been decommissioned? What are we doing with those? Or, I mean.
There's only a new project that there is, which is the Cedar Woodlands, a new one, is in a drain field, it's uh.
But there's one by, um, I mean, it's by the park, there's not.
Yeah, they're not gonna do anything with that, because it's, you can't get into it, you know.
Yeah, the ones in Cedar Woodlands were on private property, the city had an easement over them, so they're privately owned. The ones in River Park or Riverwood Hills are publicly owned, they're part of the outlots the city owns. You know, a lot of that is park, but not all of it. And I could see a scenario where at some point, um, somebody might want to develop a proportion of that. And envisioning that, we did tailor those real property de- declarations to kind of exempt some of those potentially developable areas, so that the city had some flexibility moving forward. So we were proactive in that respect, I think.
So, um, Adam, for your questions and and Theresa, everybody else, this is River Park, you know, this is some background that you could kind of help disseminate on Facebook to kind of help calm it down a little bit. What's going on?
Hold on, we were, I thought you were getting up.
Oh, I thought you guys.
Oh, no, 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 no. Thought you were leaving, I was saying goodbye.
Okay, well, thanks, Joe.
Did that answer the majority of the questions that you asked? Okay.
It's been a while, yeah.
It, yeah, oh, for sure, it's, it's all.
My comments are still standing, though. I I still think that it'd be in the city's best interest to pay the money for the survey, chop it up and sell individually, publicly, so that you can maximize your proceeds, I think that's what's best for the city and probably was better.
It would be wise, I think it'd be wise for the city to find a way to put in the budget to to survey that and plant it off.
Yeah, I think that's my way to do it.
Okay, what's your third item?
The third item is just the update on the friends that got it that's been going on since, what, January?
So talk with Jason Wilson from, my gosh, my John and Blake on the company, from the friends that got a company, um, they've got all the necessary stuff, sounds like he's hopeful that they're gonna have it done by the end of the month here and have a presentation for September for council, so.
That that was all, I mean, just simple little follow-ups just to keep things going.
New business? About meeting topics, I think this is a lot of that, a level that uh, Marie was working on or put together and shared with.
On the, on, um.
This PM, Wednesday.
Yeah, I think the other thing that we talked a little bit about from an employer relations committee is just making sure that we're um, having a timeline for when things need to get done for Rachel and Jason and others who are trying to get everything put together for council packets, as well as us having time to read them and and be able to ask them educated questions. So I think when we started to work backwards, the thought of having everything to Rachel by Wednesday before that meeting at one o'clock would give us enough time to get it all put together. Um, as well as giving us a couple of days for us to actually look at it um, and be able to ask additional questions. um, and be able to ask additional questions if, if need be. And I think if there's something that is coming forward that we need to vote on, I think then we'll need to either talk about holding it to the next meeting or having a special meeting for it. I know it's hard for me personally to look at all the council packets when I don't get enough time to do it, um, working a job and having kids. So I think just making sure that we're giving Rachel the ability to enforce that timeline, I think is gonna be really important for us to, to have those things. Um, I don't want to be rigid, but I also think that will help us making sure that we have all of our ducks in a row so we can make some decisions.
Well, if you don't draw a line in the sand, it keeps moving.
Yep, Wednesday at one.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
So I don't know, does that, is there any issues with minutes?
So there'll be issues with P and Z because generally I think it's nine out of twelve months. P, P and Z meets Thursday prior to. So we wouldn't have any, we would have to this point wait another month to present anything that was discussed the week prior. Now, I, I think that it's realistic to, what do we have left? A couple more months of this year. Um, and then maybe when we go into assignments, that P and Z reevaluate their meeting time and move it forward by a week. I don't know that the sched, P and Z's individual schedules will allow for a quick change like, like in the next few months to, for that meeting, but I think it's something we can talk about again, especially if, if it's gonna be next year, you know, start of next year. And there will be, there will just, there will always be P and Z items, um, that are gonna come in late on this. And if they're time sensitive, they have to.
Yeah, if we have a, a, a public hearing, those have got to come at the same month what there is. And so those are the things that, that come forward.
I would add that if it's something that you need to add to consent agenda, like minutes from meetings,
Yeah.
it is just not a problem to get it.
Sure.
After Wednesday at one PM, but anything with motions, anything with resolutions, ordinances, that need to be in and done. If it's just something that informational that we put on consent, I, I can work with you.
I know in the past, um, I had sent Jason a message going, hey, I'm going to have something for the agenda from P and Z, but I don't know what it is yet, so I'll try and get it to him as fast as possible. But, you know, things get, it, uh, delayed on my end and he couldn't get to some of that stuff. So I think that that might be our only issue with that, but I, I would hope that the committee would be respectful of that, especially if we can delay that for, until we can make our schedules work.
The way you describe it, it's seventy-five percent of the time. You know, nine out of twelve months.
Yeah, I mean, so that's.
That it P and Z should look at, maybe, maybe bump in their, maybe back to the first week of the month instead of this.
That's what we're, we're taking a look at doing, but it's just working with everybody's schedule and make sure we're good. And we have a, a facility to go to, to.
Trying to do it for next month or might be a little bit trickier even. But I know that we will revisit all of that at the beginning of the year when we give out our assignments again.
And we can talk about it now so everybody's aware of it and figure out what their schedules are, what's going on.
We might be able to move it earlier, but I, I just foresee that being one of the only issues that I could see is, um, if we can't move it this year with other, everybody else's schedules. We're already struggling to get enough volunteers. We have open spots for P and Z, Adam, if you wanted to apply.
It's been an ongoing topic for several years.
Yeah.
To move it back.
Yeah.
From, from our, our.
Committee's decision, keep it there, so.
From our point from staff, I mean, yeah, forward or backwards, either one is gonna be beneficial. There's nothing else on Thursday nights, uh, as far as the city meetings are typically concerned. And we have in the past tried to accommodate the best we can. We know there's a public hearing or something and we try to put it there, but it really does put that strain on us on Friday to try and get things put on at the last minute. And then we end up with multiple versions of an agenda and they're can cause confusion and we just want to eliminate that. So.
I totally respect that.
Beneficial to change it for the next year.
Being a part of P and Z, we've got the backstory, right? And so I guess, uh, maybe we haven't appreciated the, the time commitment that everybody else that's not on P and Z is now having to review this a lot faster than they should. So I think we'll, we can discuss it. We'll bring it up. If, if the stress, I don't know.
Daniel.
At the onset of the third drive, it might be very useful too, because as soon as your meeting's done, put it on and look at it, even if I get it to consent.
Yeah.
And maybe if there's time sensitive things, that's maybe where we can.
But I can, I can at least, um, when we get our agenda, would it help, be helpful to say, hey, we're having, uh, we're gonna be having a motion here and here. Can you hold a time or a spot on P and Z? Would it be easier to remove it from the agenda at council then? Okay.
Yeah, because I think she did it on this one too, because we had the two that were gonna be on there, the three. And the two got canceled, but you know, you knew it because you published it to be able to move down, so you know it's coming.
So we can, we'll, we will help out as best we can, yeah. And I think that moving the time is ultimately the best solution.
All right, uh, last item, uh, A, Paul had a comment.
Yeah, I was kind of curious about the FOIA request last fall, last December. See, Jason says it, or that the, that there is a retract to it. But I, but I haven't seen the letter on it, so it's a, I'd like to see a letter on it if I can.
Thanks, send you the email.
Appreciate it. My personal email.
All right, uh, next time is a flood repair. Um, Joe has a, a letter and quotes and touch base handles, Joe.
Yeah, we opened bids for the, uh, twenty twenty-four flood damage uh, repairs on August eighth. If you remember, those flood damage repairs uh, addressed three areas, uh, one underneath the, uh, access road under Two Lake Shady from under the West Front Road and Frank I fifty-two, we had some flood damage there. And then immediately downstream of the, uh, northbound TH fifty-two bridge, we had some, um, riverbank erosion between two riffle structures and adjacent to the driveway access that we think is pretty critical to protect. Uh, and then in Alice Park, we've got some washing of a, uh, uh, of the portage way or the, the pedestrian access down there that we wanted to correct that were uh, caused by the flood. And those three areas we think need attention by a contractor. So we kind of combined those. Uh, we solicited or prepared construction plans, specifications and bidding documents and solicited bids. Uh, we opened bids on August eighth. We received, or we solicited bids from, um, eight contractors. We don't have to publicly advertise this because it's a small project under a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So we solicited quotes from people that do this work in our area. Uh, we got two responses. Uh, the low bidder was Otman Excavating with a total bid of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, the second bidder was Griffin Construction. They were about three hundred and fifty-five dollars higher. Um, and if you look at the cost, um, the low bidder was about fifteen hundred dollars underneath my estimate. So excellent bids, I thought. And, uh, the recommendation is to award it to Otman Excavating again for that thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eighty-three dollars. Uh, note that these are unit price contracts. It's not a lump sum contract. So if they use more or less quantity than we're estimating, they get paid for it. I don't typically see big swings in those costs though, maybe five, ten percent at most. And I would also note that this cost, uh, is seventy-five percent reimbursable through, uh, Minnesota HSEM, uh, because it was, uh, you know, through the state disaster recovery account. So, uh, we do this work, we get reimbursed for that work in addition to the work that Kane and, and his group put in to repair, you know, River, River Park and Ornocko Park and, and Garden Park and some of the other areas in town, along with the materials that they purchased to do that. So once this work is done, we'll combine that into one uh, reimbursement request. Kane and I will, with Jason's help, and submit that and we should get uh, funding reimbursement, hopefully by the end of the year or so.
How long is it gonna take for him to do it?
Well, right now we are waiting for a DNR permit. The DNR permit, uh, hopefully will go out on public comment for ten days. So that means that we'll probably get the permit in about mid-September. Uh, and then he will do the work. Um, the permit's only for the area three, I think, so we can do the other two areas, but.
Bank restries.
Yeah. The other areas, um, he can, he'll do pretty quickly. I, I expect all the work will be done by, um, Thanksgiving.
This is one we have to make payment on first before we get the, we get the month.
So you briefly touched on the overages or potential in here, but those are reimbursable as well, correct?
Yeah, it's an actual cost thing that, you know, we'll submit the actual cost. We'll prepare a pay request, just like we do with all these projects and you will see what every item costs. Uh, and more importantly, uh, the state will see that too and then they'll write the check. Uh, and, and in the past, we've had to have gone through this process three times, I think, in the past. Uh, and it's been sometimes with FEMA and state, but it's been, they're, they're fair to work with.
Better with HSEM versus FEMA.
For sure. For sure.
So I make a motion, we approve the, uh, bid from Otman. Next to me, Kyle Second, uh, and the twenty-five percent city fee or the city portion that'd be paid through Parks and Trails, which is account one hundred dash forty-five, one twenty. And there's a couple of counts that we can divvy up the difference within the Parks and Trails budget. Paul Second.
Yeah, and that'll be reimbursed back to, that'll be reimbursed back to Parks and Trails then?
No, you're gonna have to.
So we go eight thousand dollars, eight thousand ninety-five dollars is what we have to pay, twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Any other comments? All in favor, say if I'd be saying aye.
Aye.
And ayes. That's approved. So consent agenda, oh, city investor report. No report? Consent agenda, uh, there's, so I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Uh, I've got a couple that I want to put in.
I'll second.
It's good. Uh, which is, uh, the Employee Relations Committee.
Identify the number, letter.
Page eighty-five, whatever, let me, uh.
You're saying H?
Eighty.
Eighty-five?
Um, it's under H.
Because H comes on?
Yeah. And then the other one, uh, I have is, um, uh, for League of Minnesota Cities, LMC, um, and that's on page one oh three. And that would be under M, in this financial.
Well, um, how about we pull out LMC? Worker count.
Yeah.
Let's just pull that item out.
Yeah.
I'd like to pull out either number three and the Employee Relations Committee.
Uh, a little more description.
Is that in H as well? I think that's covered in H.
It's H, that's on the minutes.
Should we just hold the whole thing out?
The other question that I have, which is, uh, was normally in our consent agenda, is a revenue and expense report that we used to get every month that went back into the committees. So we had a way to look back and see what, what each individual department was spending and where it is for budget for the year.
Yeah, we put that in there. Add it to miniature. We will, I'll get that sent out. I don't know why it's not in here. There was one that was, it was in there in the practice. There's, yeah, we'll get it sent out.
There you go. I just, I think that that's good. We missed a few months on that. We have no way to know what's going on, but thank you for that. All I have.
There we have, and, oh, oh, this League of Minnesota Cities is.
That's the one I just.
I'll remember, okay.
That's the one, one oh three.
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
I might sneak out if I.
Sure.
I'll be a little heated over.
Good night.
Have a good night. Thanks, guys.
Bye.
All right, so, um, we have a motion to accept or approve consent agenda with the exception of H, items H and LMC Works Comp under L. All in favor, say if I'd be saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Approved, so let's go back and H, I want to do a couple of things. Employee Relations Committee.
Yeah, I just, I was looking with, with, um, number eighty-three. Um, on the, when you had the last meeting, if there was, you made under number three or C, uh, you had turned around and had made some changes in there, especially with, um, uh, one point oh three scope language. Uh, if we'd approve this with the, the policy book, that should come back to council, I think, to make the changes that there are with council. Okay.
We're still working on it. We're actually having conversations with LMC about what is constitute as a volunteer. So, um, we've made the changes, but it hasn't been implemented. The policy still stands as written originally approved. So we have more work to figure out what is constitutes a volunteer and what part of those personnel policies they need to adhere to. There's still more work.
Okay, now that was, thank you for that. I do appreciate that, so.
I guess one thing I see then, page eighty-three, we need to change the personnel policy from having one, having, uh, the day after Thanksgiving off to, uh, change it to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Yeah, by, we already approved the policy, but how can the, how can staff actually come and change the policy without council approval?
We can bring it forward. That doesn't happen, so we can bring it forward.
Yeah, let's bring it forward.
Well, and one of, and one of my points of changing that holiday is that, that holiday is a four-hour holiday. If we change it back to a Monday, that'd be an eight-hour holiday.
Well, again, I think we need to bring it back and go on it, so.
That was it.
That's my.
Yeah, the other one that there was, I was just wondering why we were having past dues back into the next one, which is for, um, the Workman's Comp for us to be again, past due by fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Page seven?
Uh, one oh eight, or one oh three. I know we were past due on some credit cards and a bunch of other stuff too.
So your question is?
Why us two? And have a notice of cancellation. I mean, that's, it shouldn't get to that point, I don't think. Cause expiration date, the effective date was five twenty-five and we're now at, at eight nineteen.
When you look at the date of mailing was the twenty-eighth.
That's for this one. If you look at the effective data, when it took effect for this one was on five twenty-five of twenty twenty-five. So you're looking at the date of this, but you're not looking at the date of, of when we should have probably originally first paid for it, which would have been in May.
Well, no, it wouldn't have been in May. Well, no, it wouldn't have been in May.
It's just payment due twenty days after, seven twenty, twenty-five.
But this is after you get the notice of the past due from the way I was looking at it, okay? So the original, if you look at the date where it says the effective date is five twenty-five. So we probably should have had a bill that was was sent to us to be due at that time to be on the effective date.
Yeah, so this would have been during the switch over transition time, when we would have gotten the bill, would have been during the switch over transition time of our financial systems. So we've been, but in constant communication with them, they're well aware of what was happening and what's going on. And they were fine with that, so.
Just.
As a mandate?
Yeah. This is something this goes back to, if these questions arise before, feel free to reach out and communicate with us when we get these answered.
Was there any penalty fee?
Um, is that it? All right, super. Everybody like that process a little bit better?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm.
Hey, didn't think you were gonna ask.
Don't knock me out going for the door.
Last one out.
If I'd be saying aye.
Aye.
Ooze, needing to turn at eight P M.